Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order and send this slide.
Let's wish this good luck to the United States of America and the community of all the wishes hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with their good deeds and justice.
First thing tonight will be the 2024 audit report.
All right, well, thank you. I'm Tom Mulliger. I'm the governmental service partner that's worked with Jamesville for several years now. So I'll kind of go through the audit results, which should be in front of you, but we'll kind of talk through that. And if there's any questions that do come up, please feel free to ask as we kind of go. I'll go through just our overall opinion and responsibility. We'll talk a little bit about the general fund and the other governmental funds, and then we'll do the enterprise funds, and then just kind of some overall metrics, entrance for the city. The overall audit results, we did have an unmodified opinion, which means that we had a clean opinion. This year, we did have to, there's, GASB is kind of the standard that we follow for our reporting purposes. And we did implement GASB 101, which is related to compensated absences. So it's a little bit of a change on how we were recording compensated absences. So that was implemented this year and was part of the report, which really kind of just took into consideration what is expected to be paid for sick leave versus what is actually going to be paid for sick leave going forward. So we kind of had to do some estimates related to that. As part of our audit, we do do Minnesota legal compliance. So we go through a series of checklists that follow state statute with such items as deposits and investments, conflict of interest, debt, tax increment, miscellaneous items and stuff like that. So we do sample testing on that. We obviously don't test every single transaction related to that, but we'll do a sample on that and make sure that the city is following state statute. And there were no instances of noncompliance related to that. A couple of items that we did have, which have been similar in previous years, were the overall preparation of financial statements, which that's been out there. I think the idea is that it's easier for us to prepare the financial statements, especially like with the GASB standards and stuff like that, that we're familiar with it. But we do go through the report with management in detail and kind of go through that, just to make sure everything looks right as we kind of follow there. We do note that there's limited segregation of duties, even though there are some controls in place, which are certainly good. I think to have complete segregation of duties, you would need to add additional staff to do that. So I think the thing to point out there is the importance as far as reviewing, reviewing reports that they provide for financial statement reports, you know, looking through check registers, approval of check registers. That's certainly an important piece, you know, of the overall control process there. So kind of keep that in mind when you go through and do those approvals, that that is a piece of that control. We did have a few material audit adjustments, you know, kind of taking a look at that, usually some capital items that we have to record, and then also related to some special assessments that we did to make sure they're getting in there, getting in the right funds. So we'll continue to work on staff of, you know, making those entries and, you know, kind of continue to build off of that to make sure that the year-end entry close is correct. Getting into the financial information, which would be the next slide here on the general fund. Taking a look at the overall general fund, your fund balance policy is at the 40%. We're, the city's just under that at 36%, which was a little bit of an uptick in percentage there. The thing that I'd point out here is that the reason for that uptick wasn't necessarily an increase in fund balance, but just a decrease in next year's overall general fund expenditures. I know there was, there's been kind of a push to move some of the capital items out of the general fund and have it in the improvement funds. So we're kind of seeing some of those expenditures come down. But I will note that just the trend that I've seen, you know, even for this year and kind of going forward, is costs have been going up. And generally speaking, it makes it more difficult to have that, you know, keeping those expenditures flat year over year in the general fund. So really the thing to point out there is if the budgeting expenditures are continuing to go up, in order for us to keep that fund balance kind of right around that 40%, we will also have to add to that 40% too. So as you kind of move forward, think about how can we add to the reserves to make sure we're keeping within that fund balance policy there. So I think that is something to definitely watch, and it gets a little bit trickier as expenditures, expenditures go up across the board there. Couple items to point out on the general fund budget to actual. Revenues did come under budget, but so did the expenditures come out under budget, really to kind of balance things out. You know, I think most of the departments did come under budget with the general, general fund. So the budgeted expenditures did come down. And then there was just some budgeted items for miscellaneous, and then also just some charges on there that came in under budget, the result of that. But overall, as I had kind of talked about earlier, really the fund balance stayed pretty flat, pretty flat. We just had a small decrease for this last year, but really kind of right in line with where the budget, the budget was. Taking a look at the general fund revenues by type, taxes did go up slightly. I think you kind of see that trend over the three years there. We had a decrease in that, in that overall taxes from 22 to 23. And that's, that's as a result of shifting it out of the general fund, some of the capital, and actually levying that, levying for your capital improvements in the other funds versus the general fund. So that was the initial decrease. But, you know, we did see that, that trend go up a little bit with taxes. And this is something really common, what we've seen at cities on there, just because inflationary costs and various things. It was nice, you did have a little uptick in your LGA for this last year, which over, which helped in the process. But we have seen those taxes go up on the, on the inflationary side, which is pretty common. And probably what you kind of see going forward, just to make sure that we're covering those costs. The intergovernmental did increase. And as I had mentioned earlier, I think that is the big part of that is that LGA increase that was from 23 to 24 in there too. And then also, there was two years of fire aid in there, just on the timing of getting the state aid for the fire relief, the timing of that. So there was two years in 24 versus 23. Taking a look at the general fund expenditures by type for the last three years, you know, I think we, you know, we did have a little bit of decrease from the previous year, but you know, most of the major ones, general government, public safety, streets and highways, and culture and rec, we've seen that increase going up. Once again, that's been a trend we've seen across the, across the board for those expenditures and by department. As I mentioned earlier, we've seen that capital outlay going down. So we're really kind of shifting some of those expenditures into your capital improvement funds or your revolving funds on there too. So I continue to push, you know, I think, you know, ultimately it would be nice to get to the point where, you know, the capital is truly all in the capital improvement funds, where the, the general fund is just operational side of things. So, you know, I think that's something we're trending in the right direction on doing that. But that's something we can kind of consider going forward on future budgets. Capital project funds. So one of your major funds is the cap, Fire Capital Reserve, which did have a decrease for this year of about 450,000, which was directly related to the fire truck that was purchased for this last year. And then the 2020 and 22 street improvement funds did, did close this year. Those projects were wrapped up and closed. And those excess dollars went into the debt service to help future levies for that. Let's see, and special, special revenue funds. Taking a look at that, we did have, probably the biggest change was with public safety aid. And that was just the timing of when that was spent for this last year. So we did receive some of the public safety aid at the end of, of 2023. And then the majority of that was spent in 24, reducing that fund balance. So those were restricted dollars as they came in in 23, and then were spent down. The debt service funds. Taking a look at that, we did have one debt service fund mature, which is the 2012 AGO refundee bonds. You know, I think we certainly, with cash investments, we have about a million dollars in there to, to pay for the debt that's out there. And the total assets is, is at about 1.7 million. The difference between the total assets and the cash are your special assessments that'll be collected on the bonds. So you have about 700,000 that really kind of follow the bond maturities and will be collected from the county going forward there. So we'll see those being reduced there. You know, I think that certainly the trend, taking a look at that is, on the graph below, between 25, 2025 and 2034, we are seeing, you know, quite a few years where that debt service principal and interest is, is pretty flat and comparable. So, you know, I think, you know, we want to continue to take a look at that and see how we can piece in any new debt issues as street and projects come in. Because like any new debt that does come on, that is levy based, certainly can, and we could talk a little bit about the storm water too, but anything that's levy based, you know, will have an impact on that overall, overall debt levy as they, as they come on. The water fund, you know, I think, kind of taking a look at that, we did have a slight increase in the water fund from to about 621,000. The one thing I'll point out there is the yellow line up above, we kind of see some of the operating expenditures and cash outflows have been increasing a little bit, and just kind of the overall margin of the water. Also seen in the water, that down a little bit this year across the board. I think they're just, the water usage was certainly down just because of, you know, the wet, wet summer that we had last year. So that was it. But overall, we had about 600,000 in cash. You know, taking a look at the, you know, the 215,000, which is just kind of the minimum target balance, just for overall operations. Really, that gap between there of about 400,000 is for capital reserves or rate stabilization on how you want to do it. But, but those, that is above the operation side. The sewer fund did have a slight decrease in cash of about $30,000. Really, you know, taking a look at overall costs and debt service have stayed pretty consistent from the previous year, you know, we, which is there. But I think the decrease for this last year, there was additional 100,000 that was paid out of reserves for, for capital improvements within the sewer fund. So that did spend down a little bit of that dollars there for the sewer fund. But kind of taking a look at that, you have about, about 300,000 in those reserves for capital. The storm sewer fund, you know, taking a look at that, we are building up some reserves in there. We have about 400,000. You know, I think the, you know, that has been gradually increasing. I think this is certainly something to take a look at on, you know, are there future capital needs that can be paid out of those reserves going forward? Or as we were kind of moving forward to, any new debt issue there to include that storm, storm sewer portion being paid out of the storm sewer revenues? So we can kind of, you know, use, use that to help with some of any future debt. That might be there. But, you know, certainly we're generating some dollars in the storm sewer, and that is to certainly help the overall tax levy burden on street projects. The light and power, we'll kind of notice that we did add some debt for this year related to kind of the transformer project. So we, taking a look at that, the overall cash ended up being about 1.8, additional 1.8 million. So that yellow piece on there, you know, you see the spike in the cash, that is really just temporary, because that is the bond proceeds that came in. That is committed to, to help pay for some of the construction costs that will carry into 2025. So, so really, if you're going to take a look at the overall operations, you're, you're comparing the 1.47 to about the 1.6. We did have a little bit of those overall operational cash increase from the, from the previous year. So next year, we'll see, you know, pretty much most of that yellow line being spent down from the project. Overall, on the, on the nursing home side, cash stayed pretty consistent year over year. So we, we have about 1.12 million in cash there compared to about a little over a million, million from the previous year. So we did have a cash increase, but that, that has stayed pretty, pretty much the same. You know, taking a look at the overall targeted fund balance, you know, I think with anything, we kind of see those costs going up, you know, and making sure that, you know, those are in line with the overall charges and rates. And we kind of see those costs with the yellow line in 2024 going up too. The golf course, this year, we did have a slight decrease in the, in the overall golf course cash of about, about 12,000. The main reason for that is really the cash from operations broke even on, on the golf course for this year. We did, as you can kind of see, the operational costs did increase for this year, or at least cash outflow related to that. But there was also some additional debt, future debt payments that resulted in that decrease. So as of right now, we're not, the operations aren't quite covering those debt payments. Like I said, it was a decrease of 12,000. I think not a huge deal, but I would monitor that as we don't want to have that creep down and have that cut into the cash going forward too. Taking a look at the overall taxes, as, as we kind of see, the, the tax rate has decreased over the last several years to get to the 61.5 for 2024. And we did have, just with a slight increase in the overall taxes per capita for that, for that year. General trend, we're seeing that taxes per capita increase up just because of general fund costs, additional debt service costs across the city. We're seeing that, that taxes per capita. You might ask the question, why do the tax rates go down? You know, mainly because of the increase in market value within the community. You know, what I would warn on that is that, is that new market value versus just, you know, overall, you know, kind of just the normal market value of individuals. So, you know, I think if you were to take a look at that, if there is new market value, new construction, new, then you have the opportunity to not have that impact on the citizens with that, with that tax rate and increasing the taxes on that point too. So I think it's just important to be aware of where that market value is coming from. The overall debt, we did have an increase in there. We kind of, we're kind of following that same trend of, you know, just every couple of years, you know, having additional debt and putting that back into the infrastructure. You know, I think this is important because you want to keep the projects, you know, keep the improvements coming in so that you're not all of a sudden hit with some big projects coming down the road. The debt service expenditures for this year did have a decrease for this last year. You know, but I think that kind of is a year behind trend of where the debt, debt per capita follows with that. Last slide here is the overall current expenditures. We did see just a slight modest increase in the overall current expenditures per capita, which is at about 851, which is really kind of right in line with where Wasika County is and class, class four cities are. And they're actually really trending, trending below. You know, we didn't have the data for, for 23 and 24, but what I've seen in the cities across the state and what we've worked with is that there has been that constant increase in, in overall current expenditures year over year. So, you know, I think you're really tracking, tracking on that. You know, capital expenditures, you know, what I really take a look at that is, is I think year over year, you want to keep investing in that. So, you know, if you have a series of years where, you know, those, that capital items are not being spent, it's kind of used, you know, for other, other things there, I think that can catch up to you. So I think kind of looking at that trend. And you've been reinvesting, you know, annually on that and, you know, the 2022, the street project portion of that, that did reinvest into, into that. So with that, I'd certainly open it up to any questions the council might have.
Best, best page of the report.
The end?
The end, it's a picture of you.
[laughing]
Overall, it's looking pretty good.
Yeah, you know, I think probably, you know, the two pieces that, just watching the trend, I don't think it's anything, anything serious there, is going back to the general fund, making sure that, you know, those operational costs are not going to go away. Just making sure you're kind of keeping in line with what those increased, increased costs might be going forward on there. And then just, just, you know, kind of continuing to monitor the golf course. It was just small decrease in cash, but just, just to make sure that, you know, we keep trending at, at least kind of a break even working through there.
Do you have any questions? Very good. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you.
Motion to approve the 2024 audit report.
Thank you, Tom.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next thing on the agenda, joint fire board meeting. Could everyone please present your names so we can get you in the minutes here?
Ryan Millstedt, Jamesville Township.
Chauat Walton Township.
Why won't I ask about Curran Anderson, the area township?
All right, thank you. All right. So for our July meeting, we have the minutes from February 10th. We can, if you had a chance to review that, if we can make a motion to approve those.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Item number two here tonight at our city council meeting, the city council is going to be looking at public safety budget. So you're going to spend some time looking at the draft budget for police and fire. I just want to tell everybody here, the group, Mike and I sat down and went over it pretty thoroughly. The, the draft budget is a 4.7% increase from last year. So we are in a very, very good spot with that. As you know, when we adopt our preliminary levy by the end of September, that levy is the maximum levy we can have. So we technically, by theory, you know, we have until December to keep reviewing the budget. So, Mike, did you have anything you want, or you wanted to know later? I don't care.
Budget hiring, pretty close to seven.
Yeah.
A lot of changes to there. Budget wise, we didn't, we don't have the trends of fire coverage.
Mike, I know you've got a couple of new firefighters on. How many new firefighters do you have in the last year?
Last year, we hired two. We had one rookie from last year resigning. And then we hired two. And all those two, one came full train, transporting. So, thank you.
And then?
The gear that the guy equipped very well. So I, a lot of expenses getting there.
And then the, the cost of the equipment to get them suited up?
That was all, he took over, the guy who resigned, they're virtually the same size.
But otherwise, is there?
There's, there's a little cost there personally. I don't like that. Sure, there's, they put in stuff. Oh, yeah, there's small costs, but not certain, not like 12,000, I mean, that's way over 14,000. We still budget three sets a year, we're running for, so we can, we don't get hit with everybody's turn up here, turn up. I'll age the same year, and you get 26 times four and jump, start, trying to deal with four different times all at once.
And are you currently fully staffed?
We're currently fully staffed. Right now, we have one on military leave, we have two on military leave, just some resigns, we replace them, go back to 25.
Any discussion on the budget?
I just have a couple of questions. And I apologize, I should probably already answer this. But with your $16,000 variable payment, how many years are left on that?
Four. Four, five, I think, four.
Five years.
Yeah.
So we've made one, made one error on the question this current year.
Last summer, we made a payment as well. Yeah. And then we just made our, this year's payment, we just made the other day. So.
Another question I have, what, what kind of, what kind of impact is it having on your budget for the fire department when you add in those three extra sections down south there? To be honest with you, I don't see all of them actually have any timing for those sections. I haven't really heard anything anyway. So I really don't see an increase. And there's not a lot of housing in that area. So, or my rural area as well. I don't see them acting here as well. Another question is, what, what is the, what's the routine or what is the practice if a township wants to shift sections in their township from one source of fire coverage to another? So in the case of your township, if we wanted to take a few sections and move it to Jamesville, and the, you know, obviously the west end of your territory, the east end of our township, what's, what's the routine that we look at there? What's the proper procedure? If it's all on something like that?
Well, I suppose to make the request, we would probably want to visit with the township board, you know, your monthly meeting. Then we can crunch numbers almost immediately just to figure out, you know, cost even.
Obviously, the section goes down.
Yeah.
For everybody, but there's, basically, money, you know, every one of the sections covered by the type, or the kind of, right. So, very, 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 and not necessarily looking for much.
No, I understand that. So, and that's, you know, and just, just as a general observation, and I'm not speaking for the other townships, I'm just speaking for the area township. We've been very happy with the way that the chain has been operating very well. very well. Uh, the close IES kept on budget and withdrawing expenses and expenditures. And we appreciate the fact that the city council has, has worked in that same vein to keep the increase in the first budget down to a palatable level that I think is pretty easy and transparent to justify. Whereas that maybe wasn't always the case in the past. So, we do appreciate that.
Any other discussion on the budget?
Go ahead.
Yep.
Just on your map here, probably I'll take what you just marked in the three sections.
I, uh, I, I do want to point out that years ago, we had a staff member put this map together. He did an awesome job. I am completely clueless how he did it. So.
I'm going to try to figure out how to draw the timeline.
Yeah.
Section 31, 32, 30.
Yeah. Take the old fashioned red marker or gold.
Who makes the judgment as far as if somebody adds, you know, township, the distance involved that makes it feasible to change different?
Um, the township, their choice will really have a curve. Um, years ago, for us in St. Clair, I had covered, you know, the whole, uh, town. But then, how far you are away from your 20, uh, department is how your insurance rates are set. So, home insurance, boy, uh, you're there, uh, three year contract. Absolutely. But your store is not that, uh, wasn't involved in part of the department. That is, distance from 20, uh, departments, part of the way they set home insurance. Our, our, our town size, uh, it's based on better training, equipment, water supply.
Hydrants, yeah.
Hydrants. So, we're, uh, four, six, which a lower number better for a town on her size. And four is, for example, I mean, it's six in the bottom, most rural than that, right? But they're here to, you know, put it, you know, and having our, once again, we have the top eight, which also helps to know that it's, it's a part of, uh, first response before you get them out. The second part is our, uh, for, for, uh, charging fire. That ends up, that brings two or three, three, or four, sorry. Without that, we, uh, three. But it does, period. We don't want to be going 10 miles out for, uh, some closer vehicles. The closest train we can get there. Or should we do 80% of those, 20% fires, or what? Or we, or should we also try and work on that?
Anything else on the budget? Run report. Yeah, just want to show the. We're averaging just over 18,000 a month. So, this is through May. Was there? Okay.
Slightly fallen last year, not that much. You'll see our mutual aid calls over there are a little higher than some other departments. So, I don't see a town. Got them covered because of, uh, the auto aid thing. We need calls, we'll see if anybody else, we, we go on back. A lot of them get canceled, uh, there. That was rolling. Not being as against us, right? That's been, whatever you're.
Pad number four. Yeah, you have the two different levels of the different funds as of July 1.
That Kevin's phone is not reflect.
Right.
Who is projected upcoming equipment needs? Um, two major things that we're looking at are airbags, compressor, which is a big expense now. 10,000 pieces are coming from, uh, are even, to the age of, uh, they're not getting parts from anymore. They're good to tell you, they get parts from the asset. I still get parts and new effects, but it, it, uh, so they tell me, ours are, you know, 20 years old, we'll show them. So, that's, I expect to see that. Uh, our second home tanker is a, it's a 92, 3, something like that. That's a nice vehicle, you know, replaced. Two, uh, two, maybe two, that we have coming home. None of our, this year, possibly.
Historically, do you and the Jamesville Fire Department do much mutual aid with, as the Fire Department? Yes, we normally do a couple a year maybe.
Yeah.
Defense, it's a lot of time, it, out in, around the lake area, we normally do a lot of the lake, it's, we have tires, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. Only concerns I have is, um, the, you know, say, in our reprieve did, uh, public old land on, as like, on, on the east side of the lake, down in my straight part of the water. And prior to that remodeling of the access there, there was a, a dragon for the fire department, trying to get some oil washed. So, we could bring pumper trucks in there to suck the water in and use the firefighters in there remodel, if it's gone. And I don't know why, um, what we got to do to get that back. And kind of talk about that, so make fire department, but, uh, that's ultimately where I'll, what we need is great help. Well, I can, just to go around the man cave, or go down something to get the waters, five miles long line up. And you, and you got a horrible amount of truck, eight things of water right there. It's been spent a lot on the signage, the dragon, cut down on the number of, you know, private vehicles, boat trailers, things that get parked on that access road, guarantee access to that. And then they're not, they take it away.
And it almost looked like when they repaved that too, they even left that strip along the side of it to access that. But I did notice that it's gone.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I was really optimistic when they came in there and started working on it. Cause I thought they were actually sanding, make it bigger. But they took a whole bunch of trees out and did a whole bunch of stormwater, rock control. But I think if we started looking at some land sap on it, it would be probably less parking there now than there was before. They spent a lot, I think they brought, I don't know the dollars on it.
Yeah.
We may be in a situation where we may approach, uh, the Jamesville Fire Department to sign on to the letter that we gave out, uh, to the, uh, questioning, the judgment behind or moving that to interaction, how the other plans are. They took it out. I, I don't think, you guys are, we showed up, you were, uh, promoting for it. And so, I honestly think that needs to be replaced. Unfortunately, it was down pretty slowly. I don't know how else to, to try to, before they get it back. Do you guys have the ability to just draw water, pour it, back on the access? Is, but I'd rather have it, it's more efficient.
It's not full of sand?
Yeah.
Contracts. Guys, we just kind of talked about it earlier. I was just going to mention that we have to change the map. And the invoices that were sent out last winter were the correct, the correct rates with the added sections. So, that's all I really had for that. Anything else?
We can have one more meeting yet this year, or when you have like?
Yeah, towards, towards the end of the year. Or no, in February.
Two year.
Two year. What's the contract saying now? February and July? Yeah. Uh, if we have nothing else, all motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we can close at 7:40. All righty. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Um, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? All in favor? Consent agenda? Yeah, you have a couple of sets of payables. You have the minutes from our last council meeting. I was just going to point out in the payables, we did have a couple debt service payments for previous street projects. And you'll also see that Joe purchased a new pump for the main lift station. That was a little over $40,000. That's in, that's in the payables as well. Mike, do you have anything? Sir or Joel? Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda? All in favor? Public forum. We have anybody here that wish to speak through public forum?
I'm just here to find out what turned out about the portion issues though.
Yeah, we'll be getting to that here in a, in a little bit. It's on the agenda. So, uh, public forum, moving on. Notices and communications. I don't have any. Council reports.
We're going to talk about what we engaged in last time, we can speak here in a little bit, or, uh, a lot of it was spent on the 1098, I guess. Uh, we've had, uh, music in the park for, song in the park, whatever it is. And, uh, we've had five vendors, or the last time we had five vendors to farmers markets. Numbers are probably down a little bit so far in attendance, but, uh, we're still over 100 people, 150 there. So, it's, it's doing okay.
Lot of signage I've seen up for it.
There, that there is. So, all is doing an amazing job.
Yes, it is.
Collecting, uh, grants or dollars to cover everything. So, there's no expense to the city on this, on this project.
He did a good job performing too.
What then?
He did a good job performing too.
Yeah, yeah. And that was the first time they, they have ever performed in public. Otherwise, they're just playing the bass, not, we can come there together. So, got handed to him and his family for everything that they're doing. Uh, that, uh, we did talk about, uh, the moon dogs. I know when we left the, the, but it was going to work on that. The whole works is done now, the moon dog game.
Yeah.
Didn't quite go over as well as it did the last two years.
No. And then my kid called at the last minute, "I'm going to be home tonight." So, I couldn't go to the game.
You got a ticket at one?
I don't, I didn't, I only had one ticket.
Uh, as far as our road, I thought there were power ropes down there. And apparently they just have guys up there examining it. And that's why all the flags and ropes are around the top of the building. Yet they're trying to give us an estimate on what the rest is. So, I was wrong on that one again. So, um, we wanted to put in 40 windows. We're having trouble getting the money from, uh, HRA. It's in our account under our name. But they said we don't need 40 windows. There's only like 16 of them that are in need of replacement. So, we tried to, uh, explain to them that they're all the same age and it's cheaper to replace them all at once than it is to do five or six every year. We had to haul in all the, all the man lifts and everything to cover it and just, um, buying, right, buying that many windows. So, that was the last I heard on that. And they reached on Wednesday morning to go over everything again. Uh, and the other thing I did is Clinton, uh, passed off a guy from the county that was looking for historical information. And, uh, the county is putting together a program that's going to be similar to what our good financial people did with the, uh, electrical boxes and the vinyl wraps and the booklet that goes with that. And they're going to do that in every community in town. And that will be the start of a gathering of information for the, I think, county websites. And it'll include businesses and schools and churches and a whole gamut of things. But they're going to start with this history program. And they were surprised to see that we were as far as we were. So, uh, they meet tomorrow at, uh, 1:30. So, if you want to go to that meeting, I can't make that one. Um, that's, that's pretty much what it's been so far.
Very good. Tyler?
Uh, part four, on the 30th, uh, we, excuse me, we, uh, talked about, you know, now the pickleball's up and running. They started their own league and it's probably successful or something. Um, then we, we were talking about Jamesville Matters and how we can help them, how we can integrate better with them as a city, how we can help them. Um, we threw some ideas around, I don't think we came to anything solid.
No.
Wish I could, uh, spit on that. Uh, we spoke on the benches, on sponsorship opportunities, um, ideas on how to go about getting it, uh, using social media to its full effect, locking down a price per bench. And, uh, I believe Clinton was going to approach the bank to see if they'd be our first sponsor. Kind of get the ball rolling and we'd use them. and we'd use them on our posts to, hey, the bank's in. Um, so that's kind of the idea there. Um, something that's near and dear to, I haven't heard, we looked into moving the Civil War memorial down the park here. And I talked a little bit about where to put it, how it would work, would be feasible. We ended up asking Clinton to look for, is it better just to be there and fix it, bring down costs? I don't think you've heard anything yet, have you?
No, not yet.
I think everybody was pretty much in agreement that we should move it, just consolidate everything down here, just figuring out where, and should we get refurbished and everything.
And I think a big concern with that is too, after heavy rains, I mean, is that gonna sink in the, in the ground?
Yeah, do we need a bigger base, where, where we put it?
No, we wouldn't want that.
But I'll open the ducts that already come once, because Marathon says that they would be more than happy to do it for the cost of four minutes. Pretty sure we should do it.
There was a big concern on, there's a number of kids that run play up, more of here now, would that look up to having people climbing over it, and that's, so, more to do about it.
Would be nice to see the power plating on and shining again.
Uh, that did come up, we, we looked at that along the cement base on what we're costing, option of.
I have a number I received from staff, several, about a guy that does the gray stones in the cemetery.
I think that came up, I was looking into that green stone. Progress, I think.
Sarah?
Um, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna say, they're still standing on, um, the party, I didn't understand, so.
What's that?
Did you go to the party on the day on there?
I forgot about that.
I did see the balance halls.
I was going to ask.
The average, little better than average, show, pretty much, what is average? They're barbecue, I think they have their, I think it is, it's amazing. My friends and the guys down in Everton, this is the former mayor, and his stable, that's what he, guys, have a business for now. They have a barbecue.
Um, for me, I have a, we have a golf advisory board meeting scheduled on the thirtieth, so I'll be able to report, uh, more, kind of a mid-season update, and then it sounds like we will have another, um, personnel meeting coming up here whenever, yep, we can. And that's about it. Administrator report.
Alright, yeah, tax in your packet is the June reconciliation and then the cash balance reports. Uh, the police department did order two radios we had budgeted for this year, and they came in a little over twelve thousand five hundred dollars, but we did receive a grant from Center Point, so that kind of helps offset that cost a little bit, that's nice. Uh, the first half property taxes came in July second, so we have that in the funds, and we should be getting our local government aid probably by the end of this week. Uh, Mike, just mentioned earlier, there's two members of the fire department, we listed them here, Tanner and Noah, they started at the July second meeting. Uh, the payloader that Joe Zimki ordered last February is here, and as we discussed last February, we're working with the bank on that for the financing, so we're doing that. Uh, the council of governments is holding a training on Wednesday, August sixth, in Mankato, just kind of the basics of government, city government, things like that. If anybody's interested in attending, let me know, I can sign you up. Uh, Coalition, their weekly brief is in there, and I was just gonna point out that, that last week in July, um, I will be in Bemidji for their summer conference. And then the only other thing I have for you, staff has been talking a little bit here the last few days. MediaCom reached out to us, MediaCom is gonna install a new line into City Hall, probably next year. So they've been asking about the Channel Eight plans. I, I think, let's see when they are doing that, and then maybe we can talk then, if that makes sense. We just really haven't had any residents calling us the last four, five, six years that it's not working. I mean, nobody seems to miss it.
Right.
Because now we just, you know, we have all the social media, we have websites, we, you know, we have all that. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Motion to approve administrator report. All in favor?
Aye.
Department heads.
Steve and Mike are here tonight, we're gonna go over their budget here in a few minutes, so.
We'll just take care of it then.
Sounds good.
Uh, staff reports, admin, one oh nine Main Street.